Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward advised for the Nebraska Open Meetings Act and Conducting Business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenters shall approach the podium and state their name and address for the clerk's record and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Wilson.
Present.
Beck, Camphret.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Hendrick.
Present.
The first item this evening is the approval of the draft minutes of October fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Second. Do a motion and a second. Be ready for your votes. Please play the votes.
Running in favor, Wilson, Camphret, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, Schmidt, Hendrick, Special Care.
Next we have the consent agenda that consists of items one, two, three, and four. Do the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Do the motion and a second. Register your votes. Please play the votes. Next we have the confirmation of the mayor's appointments. We have the appointment of Timothy Dwork to the position of building zoning and code enforcement director and administer, oh, and administer the office. Should've read that before I read it. Is there a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment.
Sorry, again.
Do a motion and a second. Ready for the discussion? Sign up. Register your votes. Please play the votes. I heard that. Did you want to say anything to address the council? You already got it, so you can't hurt yourself.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Tim Dwork. I've got thirty years' experience in building, construction, residential, and commercial. I've owned a construction business here in town for twenty-two years, servicing Seward and the surrounding areas. I've got a degree in building construction from Milford, a degree in business management from Prue State College. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of homeowners, contractors, insurance professionals, business professionals, as well as actors and producers. For those of you that don't know, I was part of a little production called Extreme Makeover Home Edition in Lincoln several years ago. My wife, Lisa, of twenty-nine years. And that's it. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You get to do the other. Don't go too far.
There comes the fun part.
I.
I, Tim Dwork.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nebraska and the ordinances of the city of Seward, Nebraska, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the state. I take this obligation freely and without mental reservation or for purpose of evasion. That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of building, zoning, and code enforcement director of the city of Seward, Nebraska according to law and do the best of my ability. And I do further swear that I do not advocate nor am I a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States of this state by force or by list. And that during such time as I am in this position, I will not advocate nor become a member of any political party or organization that advocates the overthrow of the government of the United States or of this state by force or by list. So help me God.
We're really big on not overthrowing local government. We emphasize that a lot. So, congratulations. We look forward to having you a part of our team. With that, next we have, we have, I have a wonder to measure of items. Award bid for the East Seward Street Improvements Project to Garing Construction. Jake?
Good evening. We had our bid letting for East Seward Street Improvements Project. On October eighteenth, low bidder was Garing Construction with a bid of nine hundred and seventy thousand. Slightly over my estimate. My estimate was right at nine hundred thousand, so about seven, eight percent over. Not too bad. They intend to start after they complete the boulevard, which they're on contract to do, and they're also on contract to complete the turn lanes. At least the concrete portion of that for Van Kirk's. So they'll be in town early next spring, and they'll start right after they're done with the turn lanes in June of twenty twenty.
Any questions for Jake?
Good contractor.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do you wish to approve the bids? Is there a second?
Second.
Do the motion and a second. Ready for the discussion? Sign up. Register your votes. Please play the votes. Item number two, approved plans and specification for the Seward Community Golf Course Mill Pond Improvements Project and authorization to advertise for bids.
Alright, this is me again. So I'll throw the plan up here on the screen. Of what we intend to do with the pond. It's really simple. We're just basically digging the pond deeper. So we'll be, well, we'll be going out for bids for a contractor to either re-re, well.
Jake, give him a sense of place in regards to where this pond is.
Sure. As you can see here on the left is hole nine fairway. North is up. And to the right here is hole eight fairway. So green is up here on hole eight. So this is basically right in the center of the north side of the golf course. You can oversee this pond from the clubhouse. So essentially, the pond right now is eighteen to twenty-four inches deep, based on what Dan figured out. The contractor's gonna pump this thing dry and try to keep it dry to get this dug out. The side slopes on this thing are two to one, which is as steep as I want to go, and we can get it about ten feet deep based on the area. We weren't interested in really making the pond any bigger at this time. Some of the drainage issues that we've got over on the fairway of eight. We think we have a pretty good solution with the drain tile that we've been installing. Also with this will allow us to have better retention, be able to take on more water as this does get lower in dry times. And then also, since we did lower the elevation on this pond when we rebuilt this culvert down here. And again, that was an effort to increase detention during times of heavy rains. We'll be installing a riprap edge, so all the way around this pond. Since we lowered it, there's kind of a, an exposed soil edge that will continue to fall off because nothing's really holding it in place. There's no vegetation there, other than grass, that are really digging into the soil and keeping it in place. So it's gonna continue to fall off if we don't put something structural around it. So we've got white rock. That'll be two to three feet in diameter, sen, you know, nominally. And that'll go all the way around the pond and look real nice. Essentially what we're, what we're doing.
One of the last elements involved is, we do have membership at the golf course that's interested in reinstalling a fountain. By having this sort of depth, we can, that can be a possibility. Again, right now, we can't do that because of the shallowness of it and the amount of silt that's inside of it. And so we can look at that, but we'll need to work that out later. That's one of the reasons we went with the depth we did.
We were kind of waiting to address those issues with the, on egg, with some of the swampiness before we took this on to see what. That, because if, if the drain, drainage tiles wasn't, if they weren't effective, then we'd have to figure out other alternatives. We could have been extending the pond or something else, but for the most part, it's been dry enough. At times it was dry enough this year to mow that area. And so, once we feel confident that that issue's been resolved, then we can, you know, make it look nicer and kind of clean some of that up as well. So, are any questions for Jake on item number two?
When do you hope to start this? I mean, it goes up a bit. Hope start.
Yeah, so what I'm stating in the bid is that work has to be done prior to, what was it, May first? Yeah, May first, weather permitting, to get this work done. Before play really takes off, it's intense. And estimate on this is about fifty-five thousand.
Any questions?
I think this, just to note, the overall drainage plan. There was a full, larger scale drainage plan that was brought forth, designed by Jake and reviewed, I think, by the Parks and Rec Committee. It's also internally reviewed by what we refer to as the golf team, which are hanging out in the crowd here today. Making up most of our watchful citizens here. And so, we've also gone through some of the internal process to make sure that this is reviewed by multiple sets of eyes before we just jump into these. But this was the, the big project of the drainage, and then you'll see smaller tier projects that will extend out from this. We'll continue to look at some more drain tile, I think, to address nine. Right, Dan's shaking his head? And then we'll have some leers and other elements to address water flow and water issues in some other sections. But those will be peripheral to finishing this one first, and then we'll fill those in afterwards. But depending on what we get back for bids on this, we'll also have potentially some freed up funds in the budget. And once this is completed, we can look at over the summer out, without being too intrusive to play, doing some of those peripheral ones too. So that's our plan. We'll, we'll just have to shake all that out as we go.
Will forty, the same kind of thing then, over there between four and nine, that pond? Like the retention of it?
Not, not now. Maybe in the future.
Like, I didn't know. It, it kind of, it doesn't have very much riprap around that.
No, it doesn't. It's got some though, and it also adds more vegetation around the edges to kind of let that one grow a little bit more, which is good. But potentially in the future.
And this pond beats over four?
Right. Everything, this, there, there's a pond that beats right into this pond. There's a huge drainage area from the north. North to Wake's property and through Woods' property. That all comes to this pond. And then everything to the east from the high school. And even east until, you know, there's that ridge on, on Pinewood. All that feeds to this pond and then goes to the west through the Woods' property, through the golf course, and through the Woods' property.
Takes the pond forward and down?
Into this pond. Four will drain Woods.
Yeah.
And Wake. Yep. All that drains into that pond. There's huge drainage areas that are draining right through our golf course, so it's.
These issues have been going on for quite a while, as those of you who golf know. We're just trying to get ahead of some of these issues. And when it comes to the physical course itself, I feel like you've made some great strides to try and address some of these issues, and this is kind of the next step. Was there a motion? Much any other questions?
To approve?
Yeah, yeah, the, the plan and specifications, yeah.
I'll second.
Do the motion and a second. Is there any for discussion? Sign up. Register your votes. Please play the votes. Item three, rename Seward Community Golf Course. And Greg, take this.
Yeah, as I noted, and I can introduce now, we have what we internally refer to as the golf team. We tend to get together about a month out from when the season starts in the spring. And then we meet periodically as the season begins, as leagues begin. And then that spreads out over the summer, so maybe we meet once every three weeks, every month. And then we team back together to finish off budget in September, October. And then we have an end of the season meeting to kind of wind things down and then prepare for usually what our projects are. Most of our big projects take place in the winter. And that team consists of Bob Core, Adam Bodie sits on that group, Dan Kahler, Cody Harold, Jake and myself. And we meet out at the golf course and go through all, any of the issues related to, whether it's play, whether it's the course, whether it's tournaments, leagues. And we review everything in relation to the golf course, and then we also pull in Park Fifteen for a portion of that with their management. We pulled them in on that meeting for a portion of it. And so one of the things that started out at the beginning of the season, as you may remember, Cody went out and they had done our leases or our terms for the pin markers. Or, what do we call those, Cody? That we auctioned off.
T-signs, yeah.
T-signs. So one of the things, we're going through T-signs, and we're looking at all the things that we have going on. And part of the discussion, and, and the mayor's been working on this for a while, is our signage. We have the big signage out by the front of Country Club Drive that still says The Country Club. We have signage on the building, a number of items that need to be removed, replaced, covered up, changed. And so part of that process was, we need to finalize, you know, is, is the name, now that we've ran with it for a few years, since we opened it as a publicly owned golf course, is this the name we want? Because sometimes it's a mouthful, and a lot of people are still referring to it when you go out into the public and colloquially as Seward Country Club. You know, because they don't know it's changed over. They see The Country Club Drive and everything else. And so one of the things that we came up with as a committee was recommending that maybe we need a sense of place for that. There really is a defined name that kind of wipes away the final elements of The Country Club. We can replace all the signage, including the marker signs. And then also hints on maybe some things that talk about what is neat and individualistic about Seward. And so we came up with an astronomical number of names from that committee and a few others. And bounce them around, and then whittle them down to a list. Provided that list to Sports Express. Adam did that and worked with them to come up with some ideas for just some logos to get thought process going. Those were ultimately produced what you saw here today. These were provided to the Parks and Rec Committee. And we showed them the different mockups and the different names, asked them what their thoughts were on it. Their recommendation, we have three before you. The three names are Eagle Ridge, Liberty Hills, and Patriot Pines. As you can sense, they have kind of a patriotic theme to them, Fourth of July City, but also traditional geographic kind of naming that you see at different golf courses and things like that. And so we provided that to the Parks and Rec Committee, and they made the recommendation that they were good with Eagle Ridge and I believe Patriot Pines. They liked both of those. Liberty Hills was not as popular, but they would, didn't want to pick. They wouldn't make a final selection. And so, we came to you with the three names and some ideas for logoing. What we'd like to do is, is use this as a branding to redo all the signage. We need to order scorecards this year. One of the big things that we did is a survey this year. A lot of the things we've seen in that survey responses is we need to have some polos and merchandise available in the clubhouse to support our home course here. Maybe also be pin prizes and things like that to give out and help promote. But we wanted to make this decision before we go in and spend the final capital to cut out, I mean, monument signs and things like that to finally replace those from when they said Seward Country Club. And so, when we traditionally think back, and this is kind of the things you talk about, when you hear about different courses across the state, you hear about Firethorn. You hear about Wilderness Ridge. You hear about Highlands. You don't hear Seward Community Golf Course, this big, long thing. And SCGC doesn't ring to anyone. And so we wanted to put that in front of you, see what you thought about it, and the opportunity to kind of, to, to look at a different name and then finalize that. Otherwise, we will continue as Seward Community Golf Course. We don't want to open it, our preference is, we don't want to open it up to like a contest because then you're gonna end up with golfing at golf face. So you don't want to do that. But we put a lot of time and effort into it, and so we can answer any questions. The other thing is, we would like to, and we talked about before, this is actually gonna roll out tomorrow. But we'd like to tie in the colors and the schemes that we're working here with our branding efforts and the new branding. That will roll over tomorrow on our social media, website, and some other things. Letterhead, all that stuff will be ordered starting tomorrow. So, we're kind of excited about, but we also want to tie this in. Most of these are done with the patriotic theme and color scheme when they were designed. And so we'd like to potentially roll that in as well.
And the idea with the current, you know, Seward Community Golf Course, if you recall, it was trying to just make it clear that it's a public course. And that was really the, the point of, of that name at that time. So that, and I really, I mean, our, as far as greens fees from, from people, and those people coming from out of town, I mean, you've seen a pretty significant increase in, in that. So, I mean, it seems to at least some extent, people are getting the word out that you don't have to be a member to play. Is that fair? And so, so this is kind of like that next step in the transition of now that we've kind of, you know, communicated as, and, and as, as a public course. And we could still do that with whatever name is chosen. You can still have a tagline that says, you know, a public course or something like that, if there's still confusion out there. But, you know, these, these are just some of the ideas that we, that were, that the various groups came up with, and we've come with your input. If, is there anything that really, you know, you think really sounds like a winner? If you feel like we go back to the drawing board, we can sure leave things the way they are now and just keep working on it. But at this point, because we're doing the rollout with the brand, we kind of need a, a direction on how, or which way you want us to go with that. Any thoughts, questions, comments, rebuttals?
And the traffic directing for tonight, we just want kind of a recommendation of how you feel.
Yeah.
And then if you feel really strongly and we get a sense that there's one name you like, then we might, we'll bring a resolution to rename it at the next meeting.
This is not a hard sell.
Yeah, it's not a hard sell tonight. And if you're like, just don't change, just leave it alone and move on, guys. Then we don't need to touch anything and we'll.
If you already have your Seward Community Golf Course polo and you don't want to buy a new one, I get that.
The last one I have to point out, just because we think it's interesting. If you have the logos open in front of you, the Eagle Ridge one, not only do you have the pin and the hills and the ridge on there, but it actually is in the shape of an eagle.
I know. That's very good.
You didn't notice that?
Very creative.
And so, we did, I, I have to plug it for her. Kayla Mueller did look through these as part of our branding, and she did specifically call that one out as one that she thought was, because she's in that market of designing logos and things like that. So she did, not that I should pressure you anyway. I think that Sports Express did a great job of giving us some ideas and stuff, but.
So what are your thoughts?
I like Patriot Pines.
I'd say aside from the flag looking like an arrow sticking in an eagle's head. My, like, the Patriot Pines, I mean, if you're going for branding, logo simplicity on apparel, it's gonna be simple and straightforward and allows for that right there.
The PP?
The one, the one thing that concerns me about the pines is what happens when they go on.
Plant more.
You gotta keep planting.
Then you're committed. Yeah, you're committed to pine trees for the rest of the course of life.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that too. I like that one as well. I like that one, and I like the eagle thing, but they're all patriotic, so I'm good.
I like Eagle Ridge. Because I like the name. It's, it's suggestively patriotic without being literally with the word patriot in it.
That's fair.
Patriot, I think that word gets like overused a lot. I don't know if we have any eagles around here. I think there are some eagles in Seward County.
There are.
So we do have eagles. And I, as a graphic designer myself, I did, I did like the look of the Eagle Ridge with, I could see the eagle right away. I think it'd be a good logo on shirts.
The other one for non-golfers, this eagle is also a golf term.
I wasn't gonna say that, but I.
I'm one of those non-golfers.
There's two of those that are very easy to eagle, if you're a guy.
Oh, yeah.
We can start raising eagles.
Obviously, we're all good with making a change.
Did the.
Let the mayor make the choice.
Or did the golf committee have a strong preference, since, you know, is that what you call them, the golf committee? The golf team? Did the golf team have a strong preference?
I mean, I would say, I think Dan and I are both on the same page with the Patriot Pines. Kind of with what Carl mentioned earlier, as far as the, the branding goes and being able to put this logo on apparel and on hats and balls and whatever. It looks really clean and really smooth. And if you look at kind of the, the best golf courses out there across the country, all their logos are that way. They're super clean. They're super simple.
I agree too with the, the Eagle one. There's a lot of Eagle courses out there. Eagle Run, Eagle Ridge. The Patriot one, you don't find too many of them to do research on. Patriot is a little, sets us apart.
Is that Twin Pines Mall?
Even back to the beginning.
Well, I agree with Chris. We'll let you decide.
I guess the mash of it, like, like switching it instead of Patriot Pines, like to Liberty Pines or something to kind of make it.
I think when we went through them, we took every one of these, and in the list, there is a, there's an Eagle Pines, and there's a Liberty Pines, and there's an Eagle Hills. Because we were trying to think of as many things that relate to Fourth of July and Independence Day as we could. And then looking through all of the, I say the geographic type, type names, where you have pines and hills and ridges and you name it, the Highlands and so.
I do agree that the pine tree looks the best. It's clean.
I'll reiterate it. I think we're all in favor of making a change and the mayor can pull trigger on it.
Thank you.
I second that.
Alright, no pressure.
So, any other questions or comments? We'll get back to you on that.
Let us know when we're done.
Yeah, we'd be happy to. So, any other, any other comments before we move on?
Well, done. Lots, lots of work, you could tell. Good job, guys.
Yeah, we get a lot of, lot of help on this one, so we appreciate everyone's contribution. We try to get as much input from different, you know, whether it's our team or the Parks and Rec Board, because the only thing we haven't really talked, we did send a survey to the golf members about other issues, not specifically about this. But we did try to get as much input as we could, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll get back to you once the decision's been made on that. So, anything else on item number three? Are we good to move on? We good to move on? Item number four, resolution, repealing resolution twenty fourteen dash twenty-five, removing the building and zoning director and adding city engineer to the rail campus committee. Greg?
Yes, with the resignation of Ed Gonzalez. And at the time that the rail campus committee was initially put together, the city engineer wasn't a, a member of that committee as designated. But as soon as Jake came on board, we had him at every meeting, and I think he was at a lot of meetings as a consultant on that even before that. And so it just seems, in this transition, most important to make sure that we specifically designate Jake, or at least the city engineer, as being in that position. And then not put so much burden on Tim when he comes in the door of like, oh, and by the way, here's this also. Which is kind of a, one of our larger endeavors. And so, just a formality, but we just wanted to, to clarify it and make sure that we, we knew who had those responsibilities. And then that's something that we can ease Tim into on the zoning side as it, I think most of those issues have been resolved and Ed has worked us through those. That, that stuff is kind of set, so. I can answer any other questions?
I'll introduce resolution.
Alright. The resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-seven. Would anyone like to move this resolution? Be passed and adopted? Do the motion and a second. Register your votes. Please play the votes. Item five, resolution authorizing Mayor Eichmeyer to sign the annual year-end certification of city street superintendent form. Greg?
Just the new formalities that we have in regards to the one in six and street superintendents. I believe we are designating Mel as we do every year, so should be good to go.
Any questions or someone can introduce the resolution?
I'm gonna introduce a resolution.
Resolution has been reduced and it designated as resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-eight. Would anyone like to move this resolution? Be passed and adopted?
So move.
Second.
Do the motion and a second. Register your votes. Please play the votes. Item six, updated job description for a civic center manager. Greg?
Yes, we recently received a, a letter of resignation from Randy Sanley as our current civic center manager, effective at the end of the calendar year. So we're excited for Randy and this next endeavor. As you know, his wife, Pat, retired from the rec department in the last year. And so they're just prepping for their retirement together, and so we wish him well. But part of that, as you know, whenever we have these turnovers now, we try to go in. But part of that, as you know, whenever we have these turnovers now, we try to go in and take a look at some of these job descriptions and make sure they're really defining what the job is and what we expect of it now. No, and the last time we, we haven't updated this one since two thousand thirteen, so it was due. And so we did some internal changes, nothing too specific to the major job duties. And then we provided that to Jean Coulterman, the chair of the civic center committee, and she reviewed it with a few of her committee members and made their recommendations. That's what you see before you hear. I think we all classify it as there's nothing major here in regards to changing our expectations of what this manager does at the civic center. But we can answer any questions?
Any questions? Is your motion to approve?
I make motion.
Your motion to approve is your second. Sorry, again. Your motion is second. It's in for a discussion. Say none. Regent, your votes. Please pay the votes. Item seven, ordinance amending the comprehensive pay plan, creating public properties maintenance worker, amending pay steps for assistant library director, civic center manager, golf shop manager. Greg?
Yes, twofold. So let's start with the public properties maintenance worker. As you remember, last time, we adopted new job descriptions and amended those. One of the things is we took the old public properties caretaker one and two, combined them into just one. So what we need to do now is take that pay line, we're taking the starting point of the one and the ending point of the two. We're aligning them together and then laying them out over the nine steps. And then everyone will be placed accordingly. Most of our guys were already a nine as a two. And so there's only one person that's affected by this, and they'll align basically very close to where they were before. So no major issues in regards to budget, but just laying all that out, and that's the follow-up for that in regards to those job descriptions you adopted last week or two weeks ago. In regards to the assistant library director, the civic center manager, and the golf shop manager, there is a federal regulation that's going through in regards to labor standards. You may have remembered this, kind of murmurs of this a few years back, that exempt employees or salaried employees that were low, below a certain threshold were gonna be required to keep track of their hours, and then they would need to be, and be required by federal law to be paid overtime if they worked in excess of forty hours a week, eighty hours every two weeks. It was noted as an issue that predates me even working at the city when that kind of, we'll say scare happened and people started looking at that, but ultimately at the eleventh hour, that was dropped. Well, they finally came back around to it and they did adopt the regulation. It will go into effect January one. And so Bonnie went back and did look through the thresholds for our exempt salaried employees and found out that these three positions would, portions of those tiers would fall under that threshold. Some of our employees, and we can walk through it, were being paid at those levels, and then we had two that were at nines. And so it had no effect on them because it only affected like step one. And so I believe for the assistant library director, that was the first step only. Correct, Bonnie?
Yes.
So step one, we just moved step two down and realigned the nine. Doesn't affect budget. There's already a person at nine in that position, so everything's okay. Civic center manager, it was steps one and two. Randy is currently in that position, is at a nine. So we took step three, set it down, and put it across the nine. The hard one was the golf shop manager. That threshold fell right at approximately a penny above step five, which I think is exactly where our current golf shop manager resided. And so they were being paid below that threshold and all the way up through step five. And so what we did with that one, because it would have really stretched it thin. You would have taken four steps and stretched it across nine, so you'd get like a five cent increase, which wouldn't even amount to nearly anything in the grand scheme of it. So what we did with that one is we moved that one and we slid it all the way down to one at that initial threshold. So step one is the federal minimum. And so if we look at that, we'll go to exempt golf shop manager. So two thousand nine hundred and sixty-four month is what we have listed there. That is the threshold, basically federally. And then, so we slid them all down, and then we figured out what was the difference in each of those steps, because they're all even. And we just added the comparable number steps on top and extended the top end out. But it won't affect the budget because our current position person will now be back at step one with more room to move. So, no huge effect on the budget. We did go over it with the affected employees and reviewed it, so they knew what was going on. So. And this will then, we won't have any issues in regards to that federal regulation come January then. The other reason, sorry, the other reason we want to do golf is, he would have, or that position would have astronomical hours of overtime. If we counted the sixty-plus hour weeks in the summers when the golf shop is actually running and going, that would kill us. I mean, we'd pay an exorbitant amount. So we needed to do this in that position specifically.
Any questions?
Does this make sense? Does this make sense?
I'll introduce your answer.
All right. An ordinance to provide for annual classification of officers and employees of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to create public properties maintenance worker, to amend pay steps for assistant library director, civic center manager, golf shop manager, to update job titles and descriptions, to provide for longevity pay and payment of part-time employee, to provide for a date such classification and pay ranges of compensation shall become effective, to provide for publication in pamphlet form, to provide for a time, and this ordinance shall take effect. The top, the ordinance has been read by title and is designated as ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty-one. The title is hereby approved. I need a motion to dispense with such tortive rule.
It's a move.
Second.
The motion is second. It's in for a discussion. Say none. Regent, your votes. Please pay the votes. Again, this is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty-one. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
It's a move.
Second.
The motion is second. It's in for a discussion. Say none. Again, the question is, ordinance number twenty nineteen dash thirty-one, require it passed and adopted. Please register your votes. Please pay the votes. This is the only ordinance for this evening, so any final motion to make this ordinance a part of the permanent record?
Second.
The motion is second. Please register your votes. Please pay the votes. Next item on the reports is the city administrators' report.
Just three quick items. We continue to work through a number of your requests. The informal traffic committee is reviewing those, and we've had some different ideas and recommendations. So we'll be looking at some of the streets coming off of Hill Crest north of Concordia. And we continue to monitor the intersection up by the middle school to the west of that near Maple and Stone. So we'll continue to watch those. We've been going out during different times. And we also have traffic count data here. NDOT was in town getting traffic count data lately.
Everywhere.
Yep, they did a lot. So we'll get that data, and then we'll kind of make some recommendations in regards to some other traffic stuff that we would recommend for parking and flow and assignment. So that, that continues on. The second one is, we continue to have openings in the city. We have quite a few openings with Randy's resignation coming up. We have two openings in public properties. We also have the community service officer position. So if you know anyone, just, just think of anybody be good for those positions. Go ahead and put a bug in their ear, just because we have a lot open, especially during the winter. We just wanted to try and get great candidates in, and we think that the city is a great place to work. So if you know anyone, please spread the word, and we'll continue to do so as well. And then the last one is, there was a request by councilmember Camper in regards to the rail campus. Jake and Jonathan and I kind of got hung up with working the school on a bunch of electoral items this week, but we generated a portion of, we're gonna kind of put together a calendar budget timeline for you for the rail campus, so you can kind of see where we're at, what's completed, what's not, what are the costs associated with those, all the way from property purchase through what we're going through. Jake has finished up the infrastructure side of it, and so we'll fill in the details and we'll have that for you at the next meeting. So that was one of the councilman Camper's requests. I can answer any other questions you have about the report?
Can you give me the details as I have neighbors asking me on the water main issue on Augusta? What happened?
Jake, you want to fill that in on Augusta?
Yeah, sure. So they were doing a tap for the new house that's on the west side, and that's when the main split. So that means there wasn't a whole lot of support, because usually when they make that tap, they put a lot of downward pressure. So that made a split in the main, and so they had to shut it off. And they've got a contractor lined up to basically fix it. It does run right under that storm sewer, which is not abnormal, but it did undermine the storm sewer, so there's more work to do there because of that.
Do we tear up the street at all?
No, we shouldn't have to tear up the street at all. Just, we need to support that storm sewer structure that's on the east side. Make sure that's not gonna go anywhere, because we don't want to have to fix that too. And then we're gonna actually jog around storm sewer with new water main pipe. So there'll be four fittings, four ninety's to get back to the other side.
And just for clarification for everybody here, the, the main that was tapped was not part of the new.
Nope.
Extension.
Correct. That new subdivision did not include that portion of the water main. That portion of the water main was there already. So, not that old of a main, but it wasn't brand brand new yet.
Any other questions for the, for the report? Is your motion to accept the report?
It's a move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please register your votes. Please pay the votes. Any future requests for council agenda items or measure of action?
Yes, sir.
I'll submit an official request, but I would like us to talk about what our possibilities are to get East Seward Street paved all the way to Goldenrod at the very least, whether it's.
The entrance to where?
What's that?
Goldenrod is the entrance to.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Goldenrod. Yeah, yeah. Because right now it's gonna stop short, if I understand correctly. And I just want us to talk about what are the, what are our options? Whether it's annexing a small portion out there or a big portion. It just seems like a real shame if we're not able just to go all the way to that, to that street at the very least. So I'll be submitting a request if I need to, otherwise this is good enough.
I think, I think you're, you're familiar with this, right? Yeah, I think he's working on that, so.
Great.
You're welcome to submit a formal request, but I don't know if necessary. John?
Yeah, when we had the flood and it washed out that, I guess you would say storm sewer pipe there south of Orshlands, and now that it's fixed, and we spent thousands of dollars to fix it, I asked for a contingency plan, so we don't have to make that fix again. I was hoping that we would see something, because of the trees that are on that, I don't know if you, it's not really a levee. It's more of a diversion. What we're gonna do with all them trees that are still in that levee, and it's gonna undermine. So that's why I was asking for a contingency plan on what we're gonna do to maintain this, but then throw our money away.
The maintenance, I don't know that we need to, that's already been requested by Councilman Sampson. The maintenance plan is part of, it's specifically a part of the goals and targets for Mel. But Jake's helping and, well, he's gonna oversee it too. But it's, it's a targeted goal for the street department superintendent, so we're working on it.
Since I've been on the council, you know, they kind of let that go away twenty-four, twenty-five years ago. And we shouldn't have done that and let the trees grow in there. Now they're gonna have to go and cut all them trees out of there if they're gonna maintain that. Otherwise, we throw our money away.
And in that part of that maintenance report, I assume we'll have an evaluation of what recommendations there may be for, what I would consider routine maintenance versus a very specific, like the moving tree, like a one-time type of maintenance. I'm sure they'll have that included.
We also need to sort out, just a side issue of that, is we need to sort out why the city's in charge of maintaining state right-of-way that goes excessively off of the main thoroughfare there. That state right-of-way goes a long way to the west. And I think they must have just randomly acquired, or there was a different bridge way back when or something. There's some reason that there's this massive state property there. And we need to work with NDOT and understand what our real obligations are. Because again, I don't want to be out messing all over this property trying to clean stuff up when really that's state-owned property. They should be out there fixing some of this. We're fixing our portion because our water main runs through there and our release valves and everything else. The culvert is to the benefit of the farm, farmer who's farming the land. And so we need to kind of work those issues out, because again, this is not within a hundred-foot right-of-way of the main thoroughfare of the street. So the fact that we would have full maintenance of the entire land over there is probably excessive.
The big, the big thing is, is if we do need to go in there and do some stuff, the crops are out now. So we got the opportunity, time to till next spring to make some changes if we have to.
Sure. Any other future requests for measure of action? If not, then we'll move on to announcement of upcoming events by Jonathan Jank.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things to note, we recently finished the Seward County housing study. On Tuesday, the twelfth, we'll be having a luncheon that we're hosting at the civic center to really unveil all of those results. I know you should have all received an email invitation about please ask VP back to our office if you're interested in attending. Thursday, November fourteenth, we have a business after hours at Twin Rivers Urgent Care. Friday, November fifteenth, Concordia University has a dedication for their Dunk Cloud Center for Science, Technology, Math, and now Ag. Really a wonderful project for the community, so if you have a chance to consider attending, that'd be great. And then Saturday, November twenty-third, is Shop Small Seward. And of course, the next Saturday is our ninth annual Seward Christmas Festival, so bring the family. Thank you.
Did you want to also mention the Tenneco development?
Yes. So there was a recent announcement today that they are closing the Tenneco facility in Lincoln. They're moving the majority of those jobs here to Seward. There's some content online if you'd like to read more about it. But we'll be in touch with Wendy and their team to really see how we can welcome those employees into our community.
That's in the Journal Star, has an article on that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, thanks.
All right. Next we have a strategy session. We have strategy session number one. Will city attorney provide negotiation guidance concerning real estate interests after commercial rail campus development? Kelly, you want to add anything? Are you good? Someone like to make a motion?
I may with the city council going to closed session with the mayor, city administrator, city engineer, SCCDPC, Jonathan Jank, and the city attorney for the protection of the public interest, and to discuss the commercial rail campus development area real estate interests, and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance for a period not to exceed twenty or thirty?
You can say thirty. We can always be.
Thirty minutes.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Aye.
Motion is second. Please register your votes. Please pay the votes. The council has voted to go in a closed session for the protection of the public interest and to discuss the commercial rail campus development area real estate interests and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance. We are now in closed session. Thank you.